Calling to order meeting of the City of Wilson, City Council of the City of Wilsonville on January 19th at 5:22 PM for the work session. And we will start with asking, just moved my agenda and I'm coming back to the top here. We'll start with councilor concerns. Any comments? Council President Okravon.
Thank you. I did have one question, I believe since our last meeting. But however, I think this has been a few weeks now. I've heard a little about some activity in the Villalobos neighborhood. And that there was some tire slashing happening. And I'm wondering if anybody is able to kind of give some more information on that or explain the scope of it and also what community members might be able to do to help deter some of that sort of activity.
I think, is Rob coming tonight? Yeah, Rob is on the agenda and he'll try to address as much of that as he can when he presents tonight.
Is he under information?
No, he's in the behavioral health on the work session, third item.
He's here for behavioral health, but he can answer any of those questions and we'll have him be prepared to do that.
Okay, and so we did have, I will just answer your question briefly. We did have a really nice meeting of some chairs, of some HOAs who were available with Chief Wurps and Gina and talked about crime prevention and the accuracy of what happened. And I'm glad to know he will be available to talk about that. I wasn't aware if he was. I wasn't aware if he was. He's number three, he's, he's number C in our press council work session. He will cover that in his report.
Yeah, I think Mayor, there's two separate items. We, we also have asked him to queue up a presentation on just the kind of thing that Counselor Ockervall just talked about, which is how can people protect themselves and against crimes of opportunity and stuff and vandalism. So that's a separate presentation that we're going to have him queue up.
February 7th.
On February 7th. And then tonight he's here for, go ahead.
Okay, just to clarify, I had asked for that presentation earlier and so you're saying it's going to happen on February 7th?
Yeah, he's, he's gathering some data and, and needs a little time to do that. So there were some other questions that other counselors had. So he's preparing for that presentation on the 7th. But he can address the Villaboa one tonight as much as he can.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselor concerns? Okay, we will now start the pre-council work set. And oh, one more point. Any comments on the order of agenda or items on consent counselors? Well, let's start with our library strategic plan update, please. With Ms. Sancer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Shasta Sasser. I'm the interim director at the library and I'm joined by Stephen Engelbreit, library services manager for the library, as well as Stu Wilson, a consultant with Library Strategies. And we're here tonight to, to discuss and talk about our strategic plan. In 2019, we did an RFP to select a consultant for this project. And we selected Library Strategies, a consulting group that runs out of the Friends of the St. Paul Public Library. And Stu was our principal consultant on this project. And he's going to talk a little bit about the process and the strategic plan and then we'll be available for questions. So with that, I'll hand it over to Stu Wilson, our consultant.
Good evening, good to see you tonight and happy to be with you. As Shasta said, I'm Stu Wilson, I'm one of the principal consultants. Our other principal consultant, Sharon Griggins couldn't be with us tonight, but I think I, between Shasta, Shasta and Stephen and I, I think we can answer any of your questions that you may have. And just before I start a presentation, I just wanted to say that it's been a pleasure working with the library. It's been a strange process because of course COVID. What normally is a four to six month process is now extended over two years, which isn't ideal, but I think we weathered all of that and ultimately ended up with a good process and a good plan for the library. The other thing I would say is because we only work with libraries and I personally have worked with over 200 libraries in my consulting career. You have a very good library. It's really outstanding. It's well loved in the community. It's a really great facility and that's not always the case. And it's really wonderful to work with a library that is as, as good as yours. With that, I'll try and get my screen going. And so my intention tonight is to provide a pretty quick overview. I'd like to cover what the process was, just so you have a sense of that. Our major findings, some of the, all of those findings fed into the strategic plan. But there are also some findings that I think are critical to review that are necessarily reflected in the plan. And then I'll provide a brief overview of the plan itself and some of the major directions for the library over the next five years. I'm not going to go through in great detail because I think you all received the plan and certainly I would expect that you can read and go into those details. Then hopefully leave plenty of time for any questions you may have about the plan or the process. The planning process, as I said, extended a little too long because of the strange world we live in with COVID. But it was an extensive process. We worked a lot with the staff leadership, Pat, Stephen and Shasta and the whole staff actually were wonderful to work with and very open, which is a critical thing. We also worked with the community committee that really helped manage the process and react to the plan as well. Looked at a lot of data. Sharon and I also visited your library on a couple of different occasions and really provided our own assessments as well as library people from outside your community just really asking hard questions of staff and, and facilities and your data. We looked at some of your peer libraries in the Portland metro area. We conducted two meetings with staff and also a staff survey. We did an extensive community survey, which was done early on and then we did a post-COVID update, just to see if there were any major changes. I interviewed a couple of you on the screen tonight and a number of other community leaders. We did, normally in our process, when COVID doesn't exist, we like to do an extensive day run community retreat. That unfortunately was not possible. So we moved to, instead to a framework of doing a series of community focus groups. With upwards of 50 people, I think it was close to 60 people participating across all of those groups, representing a really broad cross-section of their community. I think between the survey and the focus groups, we got a really tremendous response from the community. And then the last stage is actually developing the strategic plan, which I'll talk about tonight. And then Sharon also spearheaded doing an implementation or work planning session with the staff and creating a much more detailed work plan for the staff to really work through all of activating the strategic plan as well. Primary findings, just want to talk about these a little bit. I said this already from my own perspective, but I, we had very few negative comments about your library at all. It is extremely well-liked and valued in your community, which was wonderful to hear. The services are excellent for your size of community. And I would say, looking across the nation, really, your children's services are truly outstanding. And that was reflected in community comments as well. One of the upsides and one of the downsides is your community members love your library so well that they want more of everything. So that's a wonderful thing, but that also feeds into the next bullet, bullet point, which is staff resources are quite often strained. You have a wonderful staff that wants to fulfill all of those community desires, but sometimes that's difficult just because of resources. I would note also, I think the staff who were particularly stressed during COVID have been stressed during COVID because your library uses an unusual number of volunteers and those volunteers were not able to work in the library during COVID, which put more strain on the staff. One thing we heard over and over again is for Wilsonville, the library is really an important gathering space. It's one of the few places in your community where all community members come together. And that's really a highly valued aspect of your library. Talk a little bit more about this, but it came through strongly, I think, in the survey, but also in talking to staff, is that your users and the people who know about the library really love and use your library extensively, but more outreach or marketing is needed to non-users. There are segments of your community that are, I think, unaware of what the library has to offer. And so one of the approaches was to really do more marketing to non-users. There is significant demand for more teen or as we call them tweens services. I think much of this arises from your children's services being so superior that people want that continuity into somewhat older ages of youth. And again, you offer very good teen and tween services, but your children's services are so superior that when kids get a little bit older, they want that same level of service. You have a substantial Latinx Hispanic population and I think it came through clearly from all inputs that more connection to the Latinx population is needed and desired. You have a wonderful library, but library, library services evolve over time and change. And so I think there are some real opportunities to make your library, the physical space, more user-friendly and more effective by some relatively minor changes in the physical space over the course of this strategic plan. Because your library is a, really viewed as a community gathering space, the connections to local history, culture, programming are really, community members really view that as a valuable direction for the library to continue and expand on in the future. We heard a lot about, and this goes to the staff being a little bit stressed, having deeper partnerships, especially with the schools in the city, but that the library has a great space that people are coming, comfortable coming to and so that there are partnerships that really can expand offerings without having to have the staff themselves do all of the work. But then your library also, finally, your library does a good job with equity, diversity and inclusion, but I think there was strong agreement that more could be done with Latinx population, ages, other segments of the community that really could be welcomed even more strongly than what your library is currently doing. I won't spend much time on mission, vision and values. I won't spend hardly any time. And the reason for that is your library had strong mission, vision and values previously and we did some minor tweaks to wording. There really wasn't any content change in that. They were, they were looked at and really it was just minor tweaks to wording, not really any change in focus. But those are part of the plan as well. Really strong value statements as well, that I think are valuable for both the community and for the staff to review. Let me go into the goal areas. And again, I'm not going to go through each strategy, but I'll highlight each goal area and then what the key directions in those goals are. So the first one always is that you want to improve your services and resources for the community. Again, the key directions here are expanding services for teens and tweens. The next two bullet points, collections balance and online and physical service delivery are kind of intertwined. Your collections balance is a desire for more Spanish language and maybe some other languages in your community to increase that level of collections. There also is, and this is constantly involving in the library world, the degree to which you have digital materials versus physical materials. And I think that's going to play out, continue to play out post-COVID. So many more people have gotten used to digital materials, but physical books are still very important. And that evolving balance of what you can buy and what your users want is one that I think the library really needs to evaluate and look at and continue to evaluate for the foreseeable future. Similarly, that's true for materials, but also many people have gotten used to online delivery of things like programs, virtual programs, picking up materials. The degree to which, if we ever get past COVID, those need to continue is kind of a question mark. So that needs to be evaluated. I think your community members would love, again, to say, we want both, we want, we want the virtual world and the, and the physical world all the time and in all cases. And you know, resource-wise, that's going to be difficult to do. So library staff leadership will need to be evaluating that on an ongoing basis. There is a desire for expanding the variety types of adult programs and the number, if possible. That goes to the interest in local history, culture and community gathering space. And I think, you know, there, much of that may be able to be done in partnership with other groups. And then your library is a significant technology center and just want to make sure that your technology is kept up to date for, for your community. The next goal is really one about marketing, promotion, awareness. You do have a good marketing plan. Our recommendation is that that be updated and focus more on non-users and expand the use of social media. There are so many different groups that use different kinds of social media that that's one area to attract more users. It's also clear that the community is aware of the library, but in many cases they're not aware of the broad range of library services. And so that can be your library of things, it can be technology, it can be programs. And really making sure that community members are aware of the broad range. And then really the website and digital services is another branch of the library and there are some areas where that user-friendliness of the website and digital materials could be improved. And the access to library services is, I think, an important one. Your library does really well with their school partnerships, but I think talking to both school leadership and teachers as well as your own staff, there's a recognition that that school partnership could really be deepened and really help children and families more broadly in a partnership between the schools and the library. So there's a real opportunity there. As I said previously, your children's programs are really outstanding. We have more people in your community wanting even more of that, but I think an area that really could be addressed is that working families have difficulty getting to some of the programs because of schedules. And so one of the focuses of the strategic plan is to vary the schedule so that more working families have access to that, to that resource. The next one is a difficult one. I think library leadership is really committed to minimizing the effect of library fines. Library fines can be a real detriment to people coming in and using your library. For you, that's complicated because your library is part of a consortium and really the library can't independently do that without working across the consortium. So our recommendation is to continue to try to minimize the effect of library fines and making your library more accessible for everyone in the community. Touched on outreach to involvement with the Latinx community. And then broadening community partnerships. I think the two areas, content areas, where we heard a lot across all inputs is a desire for more social services and connections to cultural programs. And in social services, a good example was mental health resources and, and access to professionals. And that's one, because I think you're particularly away from the county seat, that's one where the library could offer that in partnership with those providers so that it's the library not doing it, but really partnering with the social services providers to offer the space and the awareness in the community about those kinds of issues. Let's start on this a little bit already about improving the physical space. These are the direct content areas where I think improvements could be made. You have a fairly large team area already, but there are areas in ways in which it could be more attractive and more user-friendly for your teams and attract more teams. The computer area, many complaints from community members about how noisy it is and how difficult it is work, to work next to one another. So the community, computer area could be changed. There are also many libraries that have gone to not having computers at desks, but really just checking out laptops. So there's some opportunities for the library to really look at how they provide computer access and what's the best answer for you. You have a really nice outdoor space. Can't tell you the number of families I heard from that it got space more friendly so the kids can go out and be outside when it's, when it's not raining. There is a desire for small meeting rooms and study rooms. Two relatively minor ones, but important for your community are gender-neutral bathrooms. And then your library currently, if you don't know where all the nooks and crannies are, it's kind of hard to find some of the places in the library. So it's very, would be very easy to add signage or other tools so that people could find their way around the library and be aware of what all is in the library much more easily. There is a desire to explore how the unused land near the parking lot might be more effectively used. And then across the board, there's a strong interest in how the library itself can do environmental sustainability, but also promote that using. Only two more here. Only two more here. Um, increasing library resources, this is always a tough one. Uh, I think we talked a little bit about partnerships and there are many ways the library could develop partnerships to really expand resources. Um, I think because of the staffing is pretty maxed out, exploring options, I know this is a tough one to increase public or private funding or both. Um, if the library is to do much more, um, it really will need some additional funding. Of course, many of these areas are ones in which the library can stop doing one thing and start doing something else, so there are many of these areas where the library can move forward without additional funding. Exploring options for increased funding over the next five years is a reasonable, um, approach. And then, um, I think that staffing level is really going to be looked at, um, pretty critically by library leadership as to what they can and can't do under the, um, strategic plan, and much of that is carved out in the work plan, for the, particularly for the first year, what the library is able to do and what the staff is able to handle. But that will be an ongoing, um, um, evaluation, particularly by the library leadership, to see what staffing levels are and how much more they can do and where under the strategic plan. Then finally, um, uh, really two areas that the library is strong interest in working with the city in particular, and that's in the art, cultural, and heritage strategy. I think we heard so much about the, from, uh, the community about the library being a place of culture and heritage that the library taking a role in that, uh, long-term strategy for the city as a whole is really wise, and, um, the library is interested in, in, um, providing that kind of service. And then also, um, you have resources across the city that are involved in equity, diversity, and inclusion, and really tapping into those resources to look at space, services, staffing, training, those kinds of issues, to make sure the library is staying at the forefront of, of, um, the EDI issues. So with that, I'll, I'll stop sharing and just take questions. Um, anything you may have on the, um, plan itself or the, um, major findings or process? Happy to try and answer any, any of those.
Thank you. Okay, any questions, councilors? Uh, Council President Opperbaum.
I have a couple of detailed questions, but first, thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you to library staff too for working on this process, um, for many months and, um, being flexible as needed as we move through, um, the unforeseen challenges that has happened for everyone in, in the last few years. So, um, a couple of detailed things. One, uh, you mentioned, um, like, looking at the use of the unused land near the parking lot, and I'm trying to picture what that unused land space is. Are, are we talking about where's all the, the trees, and there's like a picnic table down there and it kind of like slopes down? No. I was like, because there's a picnic table, that's used. What, what is this space that we're referring to?
I think, I think I will let Shasta and Stephen handle that one, because you're a little more familiar with the, with the space issues.
It's a small space in the southwest corner, sort of across from, if, if you were going to Avela's from the library.
Yes.
And it's, uh, grass and a couple of trees right now. I believe it was earmarked as additional parking, should we need it in the future.
Okay.
But for now, it's just, um, a nice landscaped area.
Okay, okay, I see. Thank you, thanks for that. Um, I hadn't considered that, so just kind of gloss over that area. I guess, uh, that's a good point of looking at how that could be used. Um, and then a question about, um, you know, several points in the presentation, we're talking about staffing and looking at staffing and, and, um, you know, the strains on staffing and how we can use staffing to, um, accomplish some of these goals. Where are we with the volunteer staff currently? I understand that we weren't able to utilize them for some period during COVID, but is that, is that still the case?
We have started bringing volunteers back. Um, we're still down, um, quite a bit from our level of volunteer staffing pre-pandemic. Um, some, um, have, aren't quite comfortable coming back yet, um, but we do have, um, a, a good amount of volunteers back at this point.
So some of that is, um, the availability or the, um, interest in the, the former volunteers too, um, of returning, it's not, um, like, specific requirements that we're necessarily putting on or, or limiting people that, that are wanting to volunteer.
Right.
Thanks for that clarification, yeah.
Comment on that briefly, I think the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shasta and Stephen, but the biggest use of volunteers, which is a major boon for the library, is, uh, collections processing and getting books back on the shelves. And that heats up an enormous amount of staff time in many libraries, so it's a, it's a incredible positive for the Wilsonville Library. You know, there are other areas in the strategic plan to move forward on that really will depend more on staff time.
Yeah.
But ours are just not, uh, as well suited for.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. Um, thank you, thanks for that information.
Thank you, Councilor Lindvill. Thank you. Um, really nicely done. The strategic plan is very comprehensive and, and I appreciate the difficulty of implementing, um, this process of development of the strategic plan, uh, during COVID. That, that's just, that's, that just makes it really difficult, I'm sure. So my question has to do with, um, uh, how the library, um, of both the, the foundation and the advisory committee, how, what their, have they, um, done anything with the completed plan in terms of doing a review and, uh, approval of the goals and the strategies? And then my second question is, um, I noticed that in the notes that the plan is to implement, start implementing, uh, components of the strategic plan in July of this year. So I assume that that will feed into the budget process as we begin that, uh, soon, and, um, and then, um, does the plan itself, which is very pretty, um, the document, where is it housed? Is it going to be electronically available on the library website? And I don't think it's there yet. So that's my second question.
Those are pretty much your, your, you would know more, Shasta, than I would.
Yes, yes. It, this plan has been shared with the board, um, and the foundation at this point. Um, and, um, well, I'm sorry, Councilor Lindvill, what was your second question?
I was just wondering if they, if they, um, if they did any kind of formal approval of the strategic plan, um, or i- if it had that kind of a role or if it was just reviewed by them. And then the second question is, where is it? Is it going to be available and, uh, available to the public, or is it something that's going to be, you know, kept in the archives somewhere?
It will definitely be up on the website and available to the public, yes. And, um, it hasn't been formally approved by the library board or the foundation at this point.
But it will.
But it will be by the library board.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Also, just so you know, typically advised, it's certainly up to the library, but I think they're on board with this, is that the strategic plan, once approved, also be, um, distributed to all the people who participated in the process, so that there is a sharing back, that they can see that it actually, um, has come to fruition and what's, what the results are.
Thank you. Um, I have a question, and that is, when you referenced a great plan, thank you, when you referenced, um, toward the end, that there are some things that probably need to be stopped in order to go bigger in other areas, which is really good advice. Does your strategic plan give any directions on things that are ready to be scaled back and sunsetted, or is that something that the library team should take on?
Um, I think it's a combination of both. We had, um, a great working re- relationship with your, um, three team leaders, Shasta, Stephen, and Pat, and had long discussions about areas that could be, um, cut back or modified to, um, uh, move forward in other areas. Some of that also appears in the work plan, um, as to what you're going to stop so that you can do something else.
Okay.
And then some of it as, um, you know, having lived through the last, uh, couple of years, is an evolving, staff leadership needs to make those determinations. So I will give you one simple example, is your library has a relatively large nonfiction collection and purchases relatively, uh, large amounts of nonfiction. The use statistics don't necessarily reflect that that's needed, so the rebalancing of the collections may be back off a little bit on nonfiction and either by digital or other materials. So that's a very concrete library decision that we talked about, and I'm sure the library leadership will activate. That's, that's an easy one to explain, though. There are other ones that are a little more complicated, like.
Thank you.
Do you balance children versus teen programs?
Okay, thank you, Councilor West.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, everybody. Um, I have a question. I was really, um, glad that you highlighted the teen and tween aspect of the library, um, and making sure that we're having, that both, that population's having more access to the resource. I was just curious about, do we partner with other stakeholders? You know, as you become a teenager, young adult, we have a community college here, you start to do deeper academic endeavors where citations are required, um, and you have to do deeper research. Does our library have access to like a lot of the journals that they may be using if they're writing a research paper or these, um, you know, uh, at Clackamas Community College? I'm just curious if we have those resources and research help available to that population.
Um, I can speak to that a little bit, yeah. As far as like academic journals that college students would use, we don't have a lot of paper copies of those in the library, physical copies, but we do have databases that, um, can get to a lot of that stuff. That's a useful thing, and, uh, those are also used by high school students as well.
So they wanted to get to like Ebsco Host Online, or they wanted to search something that way? We have access and help for them to learn how to do that, because it's, you know, a skill, a learned skill starting in high school.
Yeah, we do. And one of the things, um, we emphasize in our reference service is kind of different than a lot of libraries. At our reference desk, you can have usually kind of an extended conversation with a reference librarian. Um, it's not just quick answers and, and go on your way and next person. We will sit down with you, we have a chair at the desk for that very purpose, not for the staff, but not only for the staff, but for the patrons. So we are willing to take some time and, and help people, not just students, but older people trying to learn technology, uh, people doing, um, genealogy research, you know, those extended things. We, we value that pretty highly.
And can somebody log on our databases virtually into, like, from home and log on with a pass with like a library card and get access to the same academic journals?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah.
That's great. Such an important resource for the, for young people, maybe that would bring more of them in, right, if they have resources to help with those type of academic endeavors? But, um, yeah, thank you for, for telling me that.
Sure.
Yeah, I, just to comment, I, our impression and review was that you have very good resources for teens, um, and also, um, but it's an area where there might be further partnership with the schools to really coordinate what's happening at the schools with what's available at the library to ensure that there's, it's kind of seamless for the teens. I think that the teen area in terms of comfort, attractiveness, a place for teens to be, is really more what we're talking about than the direct service, staff to teen service or the collection. So it's really wanting to get teens really enjoying the space and then using the material even more is great, I think, the focus.
Thank you. Well, you know, we have, um, I, I know all the staff at the city is good at and plans to collaborate among each other, and perhaps some of these comments will show up as we work on our arts, cultural, and heritage programs, and, as you mentioned earlier, and also partnerships with the schools. So, um, thank you for pointing all of those things out, and, um, I think it looks like we've got all of our questions, and I thank you for this presentation, and we will move one to the Frog Pond East and South.
Uh, before you do, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
I, I think, um, you might want to take a quick opportunity to acknowledge that Mr. Engelfried is retiring soon, and I wanted to publicly thank him for all the great work that he's done over the years. Um, the children, children's programming has just been amazing, and, um, I know that I can speak for you in wishing Mr. Engelf- Engelfried well and whatever his, uh, future holds.
Well, certainly, um, I'm sure that the whole council would like to make sure we get him a card and recognize him, and, uh, we've just had incredible results, uh, from your work, Stephen, and thank you so much. You've really made the brand of Wilsonville Children's Library Services, and we've heard that a lot in this report. So thank you and congratulations on your upcoming retirement.
Well, thank, thank you as well. It's been a great, uh, eleven years here.
And, and I hope that you have transferred your puppetry skills on, and mentored someone so that they may take those over, because I know that's an area that has been, uh, particularly appreciated in your work.
Yes, although I did, I did weigh whether or not I should use puppets for this presentation. I chose no.
Ah, that would have been good. Well, congratulations, Stephen, and thank you for everything. It's, it's really been a, it's going to be a lasting legacy that will help us for years ahead, all the work you've done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you also, Shasta, for your work in the interim role here. That's much appreciated.
Thank you. It's been a lot of fun.
Oh, good, okay. So that will bring us to the Frog Pond East and South, uh, presentation with Mr. Pauli.
Good evening, Council. Good to be with you again. Uh, there's been a lot of work going on with Frog Pond East and South, and I will just hear from me tonight, but, uh, in doing that, uh, just while I acknowledge that there's a lot of consultants and staff that are also, uh, on board and helping with this project and have, uh, contributed a lot to what we'll be discussing this evening. So we've been, uh, we've, we've had, uh, since we last had a work session with you, we've, uh, had work sessions with planning commission, uh, this last Tuesday evening, we had, uh, community conversation, uh, that focused a lot on housing as well as some other interests of, of community members. Uh, I'll also mention that, kind of where we are in the process, uh, there's the, I mean, this is all, uh, we've been working on it, uh, since last summer and looking to wrap it up by the end of this year, um, by some deadlines. Uh, and the stage we're at is really around housing, uh, is a big focus, particularly affordable housing. And when I say that, as I described in the staff report, I'm talking about market rate housing that's more ec- uh, economically attainable to more households, as well as subsidized type, uh, housing. And I'll talk about some differences of that a bit later, uh, but when I use that term in this context for this presentation, affordable housing is kind of a larger umbrella term. Um, and as we talk about, I think it's important to know that there is, uh, and, in the discussions we've had, we talk about it as the area plan being a base, a starting point, uh, and kind of the processes we've learned from Frog Pond West, also a starting point, a base. However, since the adoption in 2015, there has been a lot of discussion around housing, including the adoption of the Equal Housing Strategic Plan, as well as the middle housing and additional regulations from the state, as you know, that really, uh, also add layers to what is going to come into the master plan. So that's it. I wanted to revisit the Equal Housing Strategic Plan, and certainly there's specific items in there that both directly, uh, have action items related to the Frog Pond East and South planning, as well as broader things that have, the East and South planning provide opportunities to address. Uh, So there's the policy objectives that, uh, planned in this plan from the Equal Housing Strategic Plan, including things like diversity of housing types, increasing partnerships with developers, affordable ownership opportunities, uh, access for different types of households, quality subsidized housing and social equity and inclusion, of course. So this is all adds to really what we're looking at, particularly as we're working at this point of producing a affordable housing policy memo or, or study, uh, which will be published here in the next couple of weeks. And we'll be, uh, we have some initial information and kind of broad things we'll talk about in this work session. But the next work session scheduled for March, we'll even get into more about housing. So that all said, uh, kind of as a foundation, something I wanted to mention is what we know now and kind of what, kind of differentiate between what we know, what are kind of our base understanding and what are the discussion items, really the decision points, uh, the main decision points for council's consideration over the coming months. For sure, part of the mix, and one of the big questions is about what will be the housing mix in, in Frog Pond East and South? For sure, part of the mix, detached single family. Uh, this was reflected in the area plan, uh, in market factors. We'll say this will still continue to be, uh, obviously, uh, an important part of the mix. Middle housing, uh, the area plan showed middle housing in one area, kind of, uh, around the intersection of Advance and Stafford. Uh, the middle housing, House Bill 2001, as well as the specific administrative rules that are applicable to this area, have that more spread out. That there's really no area in Frog Pond East and South that can't, that middle housing can be excluded from. The other part is accessory dwelling units. Uh, their specific requirement, uh, for Metro and something the city's interested in as well, is about exploring how ADUs can be built more in, in new construction. And there's a concerted effort as part of this project to look at that and look at barriers to ADU construction and partnerships that can be built uh, to, to facilitate that as additional housing choice, which can be more affordable and also meet, uh, the needs of smaller households. Potentially part of the mix is apartments and condos and other multifamily. Uh, and the type of scale to be determined, uh, and specifically looking at what needs uh, that are understood can be met by that type of housing. What are those needs in Wilsonville and what makes sense as we plan this area? So as we talk, type, talk about type and scale of apartments, uh, that's a word particularly in Wilsonville that usually triggers some specific images in our minds. And, uh, garden apartments is kind of the term that's commonly used for type of apartments that are predominant in Wilsonville, which are the larger projects around courtyards of parking and, and open space. Uh, there's also the urban mixed use, such as example of the, the apartments next to the Piazza and Villarbar, Jason Fred Meyer, in the parking lot. There's also small scale, uh, apartments, which are just bigger than a lot of middle housing. You know, six, seven, uh, eight units in a, in a building that's a similar scale to, uh, to single family. So all of these are types, uh, so as we talk about apartments, uh, there's a variety of types that could be implemented out here and, um, to think about as we work through this. But that said, really talking about unit type and affordability, uh, because there is, there is a correlation between what needs can be met by what product, by what type of units. Certainly housing, land cost, construction cost, infrastructure cost are all higher in a new growth area. And even similarly sized homes on similarly sized lots to existing development uh, carry a substantial, uh, cost, uh, over a similar existing home. So, uh, this is just an example of the sort of data, preliminary data that's coming out. Again, we'll get a lot more of this data, uh, to talk about in upcoming work sessions. But this just kind of illustrates, uh, a hundred percent, in the middle is the hundred percent of medium family income, which is just above eighty thousand dollars. And the X being the average cost of these different types of homes and, and really what type of household or level of income. There's others considerations, of course, as well, such as size, size of, um, size of households, changing demographics that need to be considered. But just looking at income here, uh, there's not a lot of households that can be served by certain, uh, types of construction while others. So that's an important consideration that, you know, certain types of construction better meet other certain needs than others. And so really talking about variety, if we're going to try to meet a variety of needs. Uh, the, this other, this is shared from our consultants, Eco Northwest, which have worked on a lot of Wilsonville's housing, uh, policies over the year and are continuing to be one of our consultants we're working with on this project. Uh, and let me just explain this graphic. So at the bottom, you have the area median income or the percentage thereof, which again is just over eighty thousand. And really looks at these bubbles of what type of approach to affordable housing can meet, uh, these different incomes. So lower cost market rate housing by market rate developers. So this is, you know, we talked about this a lot with the middle housing project, how, you know, it can, this can create lower cost market rate housing, but still you're looking at a hundred percent plus of AMI, uh, particularly in a new, in a new growth area, uh, to be able to meet that, which there is certainly a need there. Uh, certainly there, there's, um, households in that that are looking for housing in Wilsonville and don't have a lot of options, so its costs continue to increase. This middle is mixed income or shallow affordability. Uh, in a nutshell is really what that's about is developer, it's, uh, market rate developers, but they get incentives or, or, um, for subsidies to build a certain percentage of, of, uh, income that remains affordable at a certain income level for, you know, X many of years. And so that's anywhere from about a hundred percent of AMI down to about sixty percent. Uh, the general rule of thumb is that maybe it will be met by that. And then really when you're looking below sixty percent AMI, you're really talking about, uh, nonprofits or government assisted, uh, development uh, that are driven by mission of further than profits for development of needed housing. So that is just some basics of kind of the, uh, conversations we're having around housing and, uh, some framework that we're, that we're working through the discussion with. So with that, uh, also there's a lot more information and preliminary data, including from the Equal Housing Strategic Plan and kind of long-term trends that were included in your pocket. I won't get into that in a deeper in our limited time tonight. But just wanted to get truly the questions, uh, the Planning Commission and, uh, project team have been given a lot of thought too. And that's, uh, about potentially allowing multifamily in Frog Pond East and South to support identified housing needs. And what other questions you may have if, that can be addressed in our affordable housing analysis coming up if possible. So with that, I am open questions and comments.
I, um, I have a question, Dan, Mr. Polly. You, um, in the slides and also in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, there are quite a few references, especially in that, in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, to increase opportunities for homeownership. And we also have that as a, one of our key council goals that we set last spring. And I've been thinking about the, in talking with people who are renters of apartments, and there are many different, um, you know, types of apartments that we have in, in town. Um, oftentimes they become owned by an out of state conglomerate. And they seem to change hands periodically. And I'm thinking about the, um, you know, that at some point, it's that, it's that corporation that decides what the rent is going to be and how things are going to be managed in that apartment building. And it also, you know, we, we know apartment rent is expensive, um, and continues to get expensive. And so I was doing a little reading and wanted to see what your department has found out about something that would be, um, in between the cost of buying a condominium, just this thing about the cost of buying houses and how people can find, how we can get more opportunities for first time home buyers to build some equity. Is there a way to have, um, a cooperative housing opportunity or a nonprofit involvement in a certain couple of buildings that lower the entry fee to be a homeowner? Do you have some, uh, discussions going in that area?
Yeah, there's discussions going. I don't really have a great report to share tonight. Uh, certainly we've heard that from council as part of the scope that we're looking at. Truly looking at homeownership opportunities, especially affordable homeownership opportunities and how we can support that, what are the nonprofits? Uh, so, so a couple of things just to kind of describe what is being done. On top of this affordable housing analysis that's wrapping up, uh, we've, we have some additional, uh, grant funding from the state, which is specifically doing outreach around affordable housing and options that can really looking, exploring options as we identify these needs. Uh, so that'll be happening over the next couple of months. So I hope to have more to report in the coming work sessions. But certainly it's something that's on our minds.
Whether it's cottage clusters, middle housing, various sizes, I am really interested in doing as much as we can to use this unique opportunity at Frog Pond East and South to let, um, more people have the chance to have a first time opportunity to own some real estate. Councilor Lindell.
I take my hand down so I don't leave it up. Um, uh, I, I just have one comment. I, I know that the report from Eco Northwest was done, I think it was done in 2019. So it was before our 2020 census information. So there's a little bit of a lag in terms of the, uh, the, uh, projections that this report has versus where we are with the population at the current time. And some of the things that they anticipated would happen by 2019 or 2020 have already happened and we're at a population that is beyond what these, um, these data indicate. And, and I get that, I understand it, you know, we, we're going by what we have and our best information. Um, am I correct in, um, in understanding that the Frog Pond Concept Plan did not anticipate multiple family dwelling units? Is that correct, uh, Dan?
It, the, the, it didn't show it on any of the maps. Uh, it, there was, as I understand, there was some concept to maybe like mixed use around the, around the commercial component. Um, but in terms, it, it went out to kind of middle housing cottage type and then to single family in that area plan.
That's what I thought I understood too. And, um, the town center, uh, the master plan is actually, um, the multiple family dwellings are actually, um, uh, mentioned for, for that area. Um, I, I have concerns, I, I had concerns while I was watching the Planning Commission meetings and that the idea of multiple family dwellings or rental apartments came up at the very end of that meeting, of that work session that they had and the last one. And, um, and that they, that it sounded like they were, um, they, they were supportive of that. Um, and, and I, I guess I, I'm, I'm kind of have the same concerns that the mayor has in terms of rental housing. And according to some of the, both the data that's in the Eco Northwest, um, report, um, we, most, the majority of, we are at the bottom of the list in terms of housing tenure, um, in Wilsonville and cities within Clackamas County, showing that we have fifty-six percent. I think now it's about fifty-one percent of, um, our households are rented. Um, and, um, I, I think as the mayor said, this is a real opportunity and according to our goals, our council goals, for us to look at affordable, um, homeownership. And, and I have concerns about, um, about, uh, cost burdens that happen, uh, with rental housing. Um, I think if people are able to, if we have strategies to assist with getting, um, uh, affordable housing for, um, our residents where they can start to build some equity and some long-term, um, uh, family wealth, um, that this is a real opportunity in Frog Pond South and East to do that and to look at rental housing in other places as we move forward and not, not particularly in this one. Um, it's, it's clear even in the Eco Northwest, um, data that forty-two percent of renters are cost burdened. And, and that's a high, that, that's a high number. Um, I, I know what my mortgage is going to be out if I buy a house. They don't know that from one, even though there are now, I think, some, some limits in terms of what can be raised in terms of rent. But, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a, um, it's a caution for us uh, to avoid, um, houselessness. And, um, so I, I am hoping that as we move forward that we can look at housing types that are going to allow for, um, for homeownership. And one of the things that I guess I, I've also seen in it within this report is that over seventy percent of renters are non-family. So there's single males and single females. And, um, I, I, I think again, this is an opportunity in Frog Pond for the East and South to look at how can we house families and do it in a way that they can afford. So, um, I have some other comments, but I, but I'll save them till we have another session.
Thank you. Council President Operko.
Thank you. Um, yes, thank you for the presentation. And, um, I appreciated the slide that you had towards the beginning where you kind of showed, uh, different views of what multifamily can be. Um, and I am curious though, as we're kind of looking at these questions and, um, looking at a different mix of housing and trying to assess if multifamily is appropriate for, you know, different areas within our city. Um, one question that I have is differences between the, um, middle housing and multifamily, specifically the small scale multifamily like you showed in, um, you know, in that beginning slide. And I wonder if you can speak to tonight or in further, you know, presentations and meetings too, what some of the advantages and or disadvantages are of each of those models? Um, I'm remembering from our conversations with middle housing that perhaps it's, I want to say four units that can be, um, in the middle housing. And then I guess the slide that you showed, um, I think you mentioned just briefly that it was perhaps six or seven units. So are we specifically talking about a number of units? If so, what is that number of units? Are we specifically talking about homeownership versus rental? Or are there other, um, criteria, I guess, that, um, would help in our analysis of, of what we're actually looking at? actually looking at when we when we talk about these different housing types? I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I I just mentioned a couple of things briefly on that is, first of all, there is a kind of a line drawn in the sand, if you will, in terms of the difference between middle housing and multifamily, and that is that when you talk about plexes, there can be more units than like a cottage cluster. But when you start talking about plexes, you're talking four or less units. So when you get five or more in a building, that's multifamily. So, yeah, there could be a five or six unit building that mixes in, but technically it'd be multifamily. But at this point, I mean, it's still up for discussion as the whole gamut and what are those considerations? Is it an urban design, making sure it functions in terms of parking and such? Or I certainly hear that the tenure and the opportunity to build wealth is a concern. But, yeah, certainly we can look more at those different types. There's also the market forces, obviously those large investors that you want to build at scale. And I mean, that's typical typical across a lot of construction types that, you know, developers have more flexibility and just kind of the math works different when you have larger projects, larger scale and less design costs, for example. So, yeah, but we can look more at that and I think more of that will come out as the discussion continues.
And I guess one other, and or something that maybe we could look at with that is, as the mayor was referring to, ownership of the the multifamily units, if it's owned out of state, for instance, or owned by a large corporation, or if it's more the local ownership or something like that, does that differ with different types of multifamily as well? Do we see that that kind of playing out differently in the market, too? That might be interesting.
Yeah, and I would say, I mean, we don't have precise data on that, but just knowing the ownership of existing multifamily, the smaller scale, like six unit, either middle housing or or smaller apartment complexes that exist in town tend to be owned by by either Wilsonville residents or nearby residents, like other Oregon residents, small mom and pop type investors versus out of state corporations.
Yeah, that would be interesting for the conversation, too. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I I guess I just want to add again that I hear what you're saying. I I live in Bilbois, love living here. We have, as everybody knows, we have apartments, we have some senior living, we have some healthcare living, if you will, large houses, small houses. And we've we've had a good opportunity in Wilsonville to see how that works, and that it works better this way than having some section of town where there is a lot of apartments. But I I want to, you know, we we talk about housing all day long, probably all across the country now, and this is a chance to be to stop and be creative about how we can address this need of putting an opportunity out there during this housing crisis for some of the people who would want to be a first time home buyer, like people who did when they had the GI Bill. Back many generations, you know, there were there were opportunities for people to get their first home and it was often a small home. Really like to find out what we can do here and maybe create new ground in that area. And then the other idea that I think should be explored is, yes, we know that the the very large builders that that, you know, seems to work economically to build a large number of homes in one place. And I understand that economy and scale is really important because if we don't have that, the house is just going to cost more. But I would also like to open the door to considering what could some local smaller builders do and that there's an opportunity to think about equity and involving our local business people in this opportunity. Councilor West, I just saw you had your hand up, sorry if I missed it earlier.
I just put it up, so no problem. I just, I I do want to echo all great questions, totally agree with the way the conversation is going. I have a couple of questions. I mean, it's just so interesting to me how we, homes are in short supply, but we keep being told the demand is so great. And that just is such a, like, how is that possible economically? And the only thing I can think of is, we don't have a lot of available land because of the UBG, and then we have a lot of reg, and then the metro area, there's just also often a lot of regulatory fees. And I'm kind of curious if there's anything we can do creatively as a city, I mean, we're limited by what we're limited by, to, and this kind of gets what the mayor was just saying about creative thinking. Is there anything we can do? I don't know, I know there's still some metro money that was voted bond wise that still hasn't been dispersed, or is there anything we can do to regulatory fees or costs have those diverted or delayed? Is there any way we can do tax abatements for first time home buyers or work with the state to do that coming into the legislative short session or in the long session? Is there anything we can do to lobby to have just more land made available? I don't know, I know that's a metro thing of complicated, but is as long as we really have such a stifling on the supply of land and it's just really expensive to do business, it's not that the demand's not there, we know the demand and the need is there, but how are we doing building permits? Have Wilsonville seen building permits increase and grow and and people wanting to build here? Or are we seeing building permits decrease? And I think it is absolutely a great goal, and I really am proud of the council for making homeownership the focus because it just brings such opportunity to our neighbors and our community members. And so I guess, how can and what can we, and I guess the big question is, is what creative ways can we do as a little city of 24,000 people or 27,000 people to 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 really put systemic systemic kind of mechanisms in place that really tangibly let first time home buyers get into the market? Is it tax abatement for 10 years? Is that working with the county to do that? You know, these different ideas. So I guess I'll leave it at that, but that's kind of been my thoughts is, you know, it's, Ben faces the same issue that we face because they have a UGB, too, but there really is just an issue with like buildable land right now and regulatory fees and costs. And some of our making, the making of these issues are purely policy driven and they're not allowing the market to do what the market does best. So I guess I'll leave my questions at that and my comments, but those are kind of my thoughts tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor West. So we have one more item to cover after this, but I think it'd be good for Mr. Polly to, if you have some closing, to wrap up comments on, I know, these are just, we're just asking questions and you don't have all the answers now.
Yeah, I I think creativity that's come up is the key. Some of it, some of it's interesting, what what we can do. I think part of it is also understanding, you know, what what can we do with this with this land, what we're dealing with? It's this is, it's an interesting thing to look at in terms of creativity around the UGB, and I just mentioned this, that something that's kind of in the field we're watching is areas that don't have as much urban growth control or or same sort of fees elsewhere in the West, such as in Idaho. In Utah, are seeing similar housing issues and huge increase in costs, huge increase in rents. The, so, I mean, it's a, it's a broad issue, and so understanding what's kind of a broader market, even region wide, nationwide issue versus what what can be affected by local policy change is an important thing to address. And then, but I think there are certainly opportunities to be creative, and I think the the commission as well as the project team really have that on our minds, that this is an opportunity to be creative and try new things. And we probably won't get all the answers in in this one year. So I think the other aspect is making sure as we adopt this, that there's flexibility that as other ideas and we continue to work on ideas going forward, that there is opportunities to refine and continue to find solutions and not get in our own way with this adoption of the master plan.
Thank you. Well, I didn't hear a lot of people seeking, pushing for large multifamily. I heard discussion about the interesting, you know, five and six plexes and so forth, but I imagine we will have more chance to discuss this.
Yes.
Yeah, Your Honor, could I just have one final question? It's a really short one.
Sure.
So, Mr. Polly, when we, when you say allowing multifamily housing, does that, is that synonymous with rental housing? Or 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 could it be either?
It could be either. And I think that's an important question to answer is, what are the barriers for this being, I mean, certainly there's condo laws that are kind of understood in development communities, but, yeah, we're not referring just to rental housing.
Does that answer your question? So, okay. Well, thank you, everyone. I think we we look forward to hearing more on this.
Thank you.
Thank you for the great presentation and all that work. And that brings us now to our presentation with Chief Wurps and our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Trowha, about Clackamas County Behavioral Health.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to actually be real quick here and turn this right over to Chief Wurps. He's going to give a real brief introduction. We're going to talk about the addition of a behavioral health professional position here in Wilsonville, which we're really excited about, and using some of our ARPA money to fund that position. So I'm going to start with Chief Wurps and then we'll introduce you to the other folks from Clackamas County that are going to be here tonight to talk to you about the details.
Evening, everyone. Good to see you virtually. Just really quickly, I wanted to address the crime trend that that came up earlier and had to do with slashed tires. Unfortunately, the the numbers of victims got really exaggerated. There were only 16 reports made to us. That's not a great number, but it's certainly a lot less than some of the other figures we heard. We believe that was a single person. We don't think it was an organized crew. It seems to have been a one-time thing. We haven't seen any of it since. But since that time, I won't spend too much time on this because I'll I'll come to another session to speak more in depth about crime prevention, but we've done our extra patrols. We've met with the HOA, the mayor, and some of us met with the HOAs to talk about some crime prevention tips, answer some questions. And our crime prevention specialist from the county has also taken a lot of time to come through the city and meet with various groups to talk about crime prevention tips. When I look back over the past three quarters, it's a it's a very flat in terms of property crime, so I'm not seeing any upward trends right now. I just wanted to briefly talk about that. With having said that, I'm going to be very quick as well. All I can say is I'm very excited about this program. It's the mental health clinician, that's what we're talking about, adding to the police contract here. I'm very excited about, that's been a very passionate thing of mine in policing, and it's been a really successful thing at the county with working with the sheriff's office. And I think it'll be a really great thing out here. Wilsonville has a very rich history in working with the mentally ill and mental hospitals and things of that nature. So having said all that, I'm going to pass it on. With us tonight, we have Mary Rumbaugh, Stacy England, Elise Thompson, and Angela Brink, and they're all with Clackamas County Mental Health, and they really have all the info and that you guys want to hear about, so I'm going to pass it over to them.
I think I'm going to dive in here and try and keep it brief, they have lots of time to ask us questions. But I'm Stacy England, I supervise the mental health, the mobile crisis clinicians here for the Behavioral Health Division. So we are part of what we call Clackamas County Safety Net Services. So we have a crisis and support line that runs 24 hours a day, an urgent mental health walk-in clinic, which is on 82nd Avenue, kind of up by the mall, and then mobile crisis services. So our mobile crisis services includes an integrated team of mobile crisis clinicians that dispatch here from the crisis clinic. And we have, so QHP clinicians, master's level clinicians, bachelor's level case managers or people with at least three years of experience. We call them qualified mental health associates, QHAs, and then peer support specialists. And then what Chief Wurps was referencing was, we have two clinicians who are stationed at the sheriff's office, and they have been there since about, like, I think, 2010, responding to calls from dispatch directly. Our mobile crisis team also responds to calls from dispatch, but through the crisis line. It's not a direct connection like it is with our behavioral health unit, or BHU, is what we call the folks at the sheriff's office. So we have a lot of strengths in that we have, we do have a 24-hour mobile crisis response team. And so the challenge we have, though, is this county is huge, right? And, you know, response time, depending on the time of day and the traffic on 205, I'm sure you all know, from 82nd Avenue to Wilsonville, is is kind of difficult. And so, and we are also state funded, so our success in some ways is directly correlated to crisis response. So we do pride ourselves on being able to do some preventative work and some follow-up post-crisis support. It's something that we really value, but we have to always prioritize the crisis. And so one thing that we have been really excited about, and we're also very, very excited about this project, is the opportunity to place someone in Wilsonville, which would greatly improve, you know, our response times down there because they would just be dedicated to Wilsonville. Also, they could focus on some of the prevention and follow-ups. I know I have been down there, you know, you guys have a wonderful, beautiful community with a lot of integrated housing, and I've been down there after some crises to try to build relationships with different community providers, but it's always after a crisis, right? So to have someone who's part of your team, who could work on building those relationships, be proactive, you know, be preventative, get to know like some of your more frequent callers to 911 or to place non-emergency or, you know, kind of whatever you you determine would be the best use, you know, it could be really, really powerful. So what we're talking about is one full-time position, and I think we're still kind of, you know, thinking about the hours, but probably four, four days a week, I think. And they can do training, I'm looking at my list here. We also do a lot of trainings on our, in our behavioral health team. So we have a website, I know that Mary has spoken about, Get Trained to Help, which can provide asking a question, kind of suicide prevention training and mental health first stage. But also, you know, we do, like our behavioral health unit, we've done trainings for Oregon City employees, we trained the non-sworn staff at our public safety building, we, the Oregon City employees did include library staff, I mean, I heard that in your library presentation, that they might like some support in how they support individuals who experience a mental health condition. So that is something that we do, and I think we do pretty well. So another benefit of contracting with us is that though your clinician is down there in Wilsonville, they are connected to our team. So they have, you know, they know the people who answer the crisis line, they'll know if we need backup, if they're out for a day, you know, it's going to be easy to tap in. Our mobile crisis team or the behavioral health unit will have access to the same records, so we'll know what's going on with the person and kind of be able to slide in and support each other, and it won't be one person on an island. So that is kind of like the very, very quick. What do you want to know more about?
Uh, Councilors, do you have questions? Oh, Councilor West.
Thank you. Can you, I guess, I I think that it's so clear, we all know that we need more mental health providers in Oregon and that we've really been lagging nationally in that area. And in depths of despair, Oregon's top 10 in the nation. And so there is really big mental health component, and you're right, the county's huge, it's like urban, it's rural, it's all, it's a big county. So specifically here in Wilsonville with this position, which is great because we're adding more potential opportunities for a safety net, can you, and maybe I missed it, but like, can you tell me, is, are is, are we looking for a certain level of experience and education for this person? Will they go to a call with a police officer and potentially go into a dangerous situation where someone's having an acute episode, um, for mental health? Um, what, uh, and, and if so, like, um, are they there to de-escalate? Or does that put us at risk at all if they're in that acute situation where somebody really is in that moment because of their mental health issue dangerous? So we thought about kind of this, what this looks like, um, when they're actually out there giving the service or the care.
That's a really great question. Thank you for asking. I appreciate it always when folks think about the safety of our team because there is a big push right now to like get the counselors out there first. And I'm like, whoa, sometimes we are not the best ones to show up with our fuzzy vests, you know? Um, so, but, um, but we do have a triage. So our behavioral health unit, and I think we're looking at modeling this position very similarly. They're actually connected. They have the same tough looks as law enforcement and are able to very easily partner. So if they say, hey, you know, this is a, a call involving suicidality, and there's a gun, and it's very high risk, like usually law enforcement are either already there or they're saying meet me there. Um, and they're kind of meeting away from the scene and approaching together. Um, we only enter a scene once it's safe and secure. Um, so, um, you know, we do, uh, usually law enforcement will secure a scene first, and then we will come. We may be waiting right around the corner, but that usually gets secured first. Um, they also have the radios, so sometimes we do go on calls, um, with out-law enforcement. Um, and in that case, we work as a pair. And that is another way that this position, um, being connected to our larger team could be really beneficial because they could tap someone in and say, hey, you know, this person is experiencing, um, a lot of, um, say there's a lot of fear about law enforcement, but also I'm a little nervous. So they'll bring a partner with them, and that allows one person to be monitoring the safety while the other person is really focusing on the assessment. Um, and the, uh, BHU clinicians also have a radio, um, so they do get immediate response. And we do a lot of field-based safety training, um, for our clinicians before we send them in the field. And they train with one of our, we're very lucky to have a, a, one of our behavioral health clinicians who's also, uh, have a history of being a law enforcement officer. And so he does a lot of my training with new hires, um, around safety and scene security, like out in the, I have the conversation with them. We watch some training videos. I go out a little bit, but he goes out with them really dedicated for a couple of weeks, just focusing on the safety component. So we take that very, very seriously. And we have a series of triage questions to help us determine. And I tell my counselors, you don't even have to say why you need police. If you just have a feeling, um, that's enough for me. Take, you know, partner with law enforcement. Um, and then if we don't need them, we can say, hey, we got it, and let folks leave.
Stacy, really quick, thank you so much. But what's the hours of training for somebody in this position? And what's their mandate, what's their minimum education requirement, um, that they'll need to be able to? And, and I know this as like, I know this is a fact too, that often the police have to deal with a dangerous situation, but then the patient becomes the family and becomes the loved ones and the community around that person. So I'm also, I'm just visualizing this person having to provide that kind of like support and reassurances to those people also. Um, and, and then advocating when things de-escalate with the patient. I think, I'm a nurse, I always say patients. I don't know, like, and that's what I, client or whatever term we use. Um, but I really am, can, I really want to make sure, um, I didn't know the qualification level of somebody. Those are very, it's a very, it can be a very intense situation. And then how many hours of actual, like, training is this person getting to be able to like do this kind of specialized mental health care?
Yeah, so, um, the minimum qualification is a master's degree in counseling, social work, or related field. Um, and licensure is preferred. If they're not licensed, um, they actually, the, the county requires that they become licensed within four years of their hire date. So they will work with us on licensure supervision, uh, very intensively. Our minimum requirements have been a year of crisis experience. Um, and that looks in a lot of, a lot of different ways. Um, and then we kind of tailor our onboarding process to whatever the person is bringing in. So if they're coming from a mobile team, or if you, you know, if they're, if they're coming from a license and they've been on Multnomah County's Project, Product Respond, their training may be minimal, whereas if they're coming from, you know, only one year out of school, um, then we're going to have a, a much more intensive training process and partnering process to get them ready.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now. If we have more questions, do you, I'm hoping for the city can connect us, but that's my questions for now.
Thank you. Councilor Linville.
Thank you, um, Stacy, for your presentation. Um, so my sense is that, um, and, um, we're looking at, I think you said four days a week, but are we looking at daytime hours? Are we looking at flexible schedule? Or are we looking at on-call? What, what kinds of hours, um, were you thinking that we? And maybe this is, maybe this is a question for the chief.
Well, we've been working collaboratively on that, and we haven't landed anywhere just yet. Um, one of the hours we see that, so I've looked at the statistics as to what days of the week, what hours of the day, and what I find is it's just all over the map. There's no sort of pattern. I can go, okay, this right here would be the days of the week or, or, uh, the hours of the day. That would be perfect. Uh, because we're never going to get to perfection, unfortunately. But, um, I'm just, I'm going to throw out just kind of one of the things that we've been talking about is that that person would have at least one weekend day off. And then also some hours in the range of 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, which gets them kind of through the nine to five, but also a little bit into the evening too. Um, and the, uh, Stacy can talk a little bit more about the on-call portion because our, the clinician assigned to Wilsonville wouldn't, as I understand it, isn't, they're not on-call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But there are other crisis intervention teams. And Stacy, go ahead and explain that in more detail, if you would, please.
Yeah. Yeah, we do have, um, mobile crisis 24 hours a day. Um, so right now, we have people in the office 8:30 to 7:00. Um, and then after those hours, we have an on-call rotation of the same clinicians, but basically one, um, person is assigned to after-hours each week. Um, and so we are able to respond. Um, they're accessed through our crisis and support line.
Oh, I think this is really exciting. Um, I think it's such a great, it's just going to be such a wonderful support, I think, for our, for our certified officers. But it's also going to be, I think, a, fill a need in our community, um, for, um, people that are, hopefully it becomes an alternative, um, to need for law enforcement and, uh, that people can get some help and get some services and, and not be out there kind of by themselves and dealing with a crisis. So I'm excited that, that we're, um, doing this. And I'm glad that we're partnering with Clackamas County because I think it, as it is with our, uh, law enforcement services, we have the access to a, a bigger, a bigger resource than we would have if we did it all on our own. So. Well, thank you very much for that presentation. And, um, I think we're all glad when our chief of police is really glad about a new program because we support our public safety and police department. And, um, I want to thank our city staff and all the council for thinking through some of these ideas and getting us to this point. Um, one of the things I wondered about too is, um, as I'm, I'm, I haven't been, um, you know, involved in this type of call, but do you see opportunities from time to time with your history and knowledge of this behavioral health specialist being able to, it may not be a law enforcement situation so much as the person is needing some housing and counseling services? And how those conversations may lead to, um, making use of the resources that we have through Clackamas County more effectively than we do right now?
Yeah, I think one thing, um, we can say anything good has come from COVID. Uh, but one thing that good that has come, I think, is telehealth. Um, and the ability to use, um, remote services. So we do have a walk-in clinic, um, like I said, up here on 82nd Avenue, which also has like, they have great counselors. They have a prescriber, um, you know, and, and peer support services, and just, it's just a real box of information, um, and services. And so this person would be able, and, you know, I'd want to have them spend a little time here, get to know everyone so they feel really good making those referrals. Um, and, you know, we could set it up so that your, um, community members are receiving those services virtually. Um, and we are even able to deliver cell phones and other things to help facilitate that process, um, so that we can really connect them. And then the, the goal of the clinic here, this is short-term stabilization, is to, to help people stabilize and then connect to ongoing providers. But we know now with the provider shortage, that is taking a longer and longer, uh, period of time. And so a service like this is really important. And it'll, I think, be a really good connection for your community.
Well, thank you. It's wonderful to be able to visit with you, um, right here in person on Zoom. And, um, I don't see any other hands raised, so I think we can, um, free you up for your evening. Stacy, thank you to you and your team members and Chief Wurps and Gina Troha for, for this presentation.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for your time, Council.
Thank you. So with that, I'm, I'm ready to adjourn the work session at 6:55 PM, and we will reconvene at 7:00 PM.